I like your hairstyle.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, and welcome to the City of Sugar Land City Council Meeting for Tuesday, March the 2nd. A little bit about tonight. In a minute, we're going to have our mayor pro tem. Jennifer Lane is going to do the invocation. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And then we're going to have two recognitions. I'll come down off the dais for both recognitions. We'll do them right down here in front. I know there's some people in the audience here that we'll be recognizing. Our honored guests, and then we'll have some people that will be virtual. So, June, would you like to lead us in the invocation?
Yes, thank you. Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for this opportunity to gather together today in freedom to discuss the business of local government and to pray openly over our great city. I ask you to cast a hedge of protection over our local community leaders, their families, also for our City of Sugar Land employees that work tirelessly to keep our city moving. We lift up our local leaders across the nation. We pray for our mayors, council members, county commissioners, police chiefs, firefighters, medical and public works professionals, and all who serve our local communities. Strengthen them with wisdom and grace for the heavy burdens they may carry. May they manage their teams and projects with love. Keep their hearts pure and their eyes turned toward you, Lord, as they work in the best interest of the people they are called to serve. We ask that you help guide us to remain the model city we are within Fort Bend County in the state of Texas, as we continue on our goal of becoming the safest city in the United States of America. Please be with each of us as we start and finish our days doing our best to keep our families safe and city thriving. We are Fort Bend Strong, especially together. God bless Sugar Land and the great state of Texas and the United States of America. Amen.
Amen.
If you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under governor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. We've got Chief King here tonight. Let me introduce, we've got the Citizens Fire Academy Class Number 17, our graduates tonight. I think we're doing them all virtually. Is that correct, Chief King?
Yes, sir, Mayor, it is.
Okay. There we go. Hi, William. Let me introduce our graduates. We've got Yacine Alayobi, Herbert Alvarado, Nourdina Tar, Dong Machu, Ann Garrison, Carl Guzman, Isabel Hernandez, Kathir Kamachi, Ronald Meckler, Rachel Owens, Rachel Salazar, Brooke Taylor, Andrew Wager, Jack Wagner, Kathleen Zane, and William Zane. If we get a round of applause for our graduates. Well, the first thing I want to say is thank you for your dedication, one for enrolling and for sticking with it to graduate. And at this time, I'm going to chair, hand it off to Chief King. Cindy.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Citizens Fire Academy Class Number 17 was a very unique one, for sure. We kicked off in February of 2020, and we never imagined that it would be a full year before we'd be able to celebrate this class to complete the group and complete the group. Our first meeting was in February 6th of last year, and we met in person last on February 27th. We ended up trying to hold out hope for completion in person, but we finished up virtually in May of 2020. We also planned a live burn once it cooled off. Once it cooled off, we set a date, and COVID spiked, so we ended up having to postpone that. This group has stayed strong and true to the Citizens Fire Academy and to Sugar Land Fire EMS throughout this whole process. We can't thank them enough for the flexibility they've had to exhibit. We look forward to this class being able to participate in our next burn when we have the opportunity, and also do the ride-alongs with our firefighters as soon as it is safe to do so. Thank you, Citizens Fire Academy Class Number 17.
Congratulations to everybody. Our next recognition is for Theater in Our Schools Month. And we've actually got a proclamation. Let me introduce our special guests. We've got Talia Hammerman, Ridge Point High School, our 2021 State Thesbian Officer for the Texas Thespians Chapter of the International Thesbian Society. Talia?
I think she, there's a car accident, this will maybe be a bit late.
Oh, no. Okay. So hopefully she'll join us soon. James Drew, our Director of Fine Arts at Fort Bend ISD. James, are you with us? Okay, he's up on the screen. There we go. Jim, Miles Keys, Ridge Point High School, awarded the Texas Thesbian Scholarship. Is he with Talia, maybe? He may be. And Pradanya Sebramanya with Clemens High School, who was also awarded the Texas Thesbian Scholarship. I'm supposed to hand this thing off to Talia. Talia's not here, so let me, Jim, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Zimmerman, for the opportunity to participate in today's special event. Theater in Our Schools Month is a grassroots effort to educate our communities and community leaders about the benefit of offering theater in the schools and to draw attention to the need for more access to quality theater programs for all students. Theater courses and activities are an essential part of Fort Bend ISD's comprehensive fine arts program that allows students to explore the artistic components of theater while developing the 21st century skills of communication, collaboration, creativity, and critical thinking, which are all components of FBISD's profile of a graduate. Theater offers to our young artists a diverse range of activities to explore, including acting, directing, design, visual arts, dance, music, and technical theater. Our theater students compete successfully in annual UIL and Thesbian events and have been accepted to some of the most competitive collegiate theater programs in the country. Last year alone, FBISD theater students reported earning over $6.5 million in college scholarships. The benefits of theater education to our students is wide-ranging. On behalf of all our theater educators and students, we appreciate the support of the City of Sugar Land and your recognition of the importance of theater as part of a well-rounded education for our Sugar Land area students. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. At this time, I think what I'll do is I'll read the proclamation, and then if Talia gets here later, wherever we are in the council meeting, we'll go ahead and allow her to speak and say a few words like she was going to. I'll tell you, I was very impressed. I joined her on a phone call as I was heading down to another city, and she was very impressive, very passionate about the Thesbian Society. She took her charge very seriously, called me a few times to get in touch with me to make sure that we'd be able to recognize her, and then she followed up. So, Jim, thank you, and then Talia, we'll thank her hopefully a little bit later, and hopefully, hopefully she's okay. Let me read the proclamation. "To true 7678 Theater Company, Theater in Our Schools Month, March 1st of 2021. Whereas every year in March, the American Allegiance for Theater and Education, the Educational Theater Association, and the International Thesbian Society partner for Theater in Our Schools Month, to raise awareness about the value of theater education and draw attention to the need for all students to have access to a quality theater program. And whereas theater is an integral part of arts education, and the arts have been part of life from the very beginning and are an inseparable part of the human journey, describing, defining, and deepening the human experience, and adding depth and dimension to the environment we live in. And whereas all students participating in arts education courses benefit from the skills and processes developed through the arts and apply those skills in a variety of disciplines and settings, no matter their intended career path. Theater helps develop self-confidence, boost self-reliance, and increase empathy and compassion towards oneself and others. And whereas theater programs in the City of Sugar Land shape the future of our young people, there are a variety of benefits that come from taking part in these programs for students of all backgrounds and professional and educational interests, including creative problem-solving skills, the ability to accomplish team goals, and many more." And we'll save this proclamation for Talia once she gets here. Before I move on to item number one, public comment, I wanted to recognize a few people in our community. Many of you know during the Arctic blast that came through, we had a number of people in Sugar Land that were impacted. And we've had a number of our community members that have come up. They've had food drives, they've had water drives, a couple of our council members, Council Member Ferguson, Council Member Carmali, have been involved in putting together some of those events. I know Muriad Ajani and the Ismaili Group at the Jamat Kana have sponsored that. I want to thank all of the residents of Sugar Land for their, for not only donating their time but their resources to help those that are less fortunate recover from that unprecedented event. With that, we're going to move to item number one, public comment. This is reserved for anybody that wants to comment on a particular item on the agenda. We'll receive that, they'll be limited to three minutes. Thomas, do we have anybody?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, nobody signed up.
We remove item number two, the consent agenda. All these items are taken as one motion unless the council member wants to pull an item. At that time, we'll have a brief presentation on that item and take that as a separate action. Do I have a motion?
Sir.
I got a motion by Jacobson, do I have a second? Got a second by Carmali. You'll vote at this time, please. And it passes 7-0. Thank you, council members. Move on to item number three, public hearings. 3A Public Hearing, receiving here, all persons interested in the proposed conditional use permit for the establishment of a car wash facility. Quick Quack Car Wash, classified in the land use metrics, is auto repair services minor, which requires a conditional use permit in the general business B2 district on approximately .86 acres, located south corner of the intersection at US 98 and University Boulevard. We've got Laura Warner, our staff, Laura, where you, you're going to make, I think, a brief presentation.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Laura.
So here at University in 98, you might be familiar with the existing Murphy's Express that obtained a CUP several years ago, and now the remaining little triangle there at the rear behind the Murphy's between that and the ditch here circled in red is going, is moving forward as a proposed car wash. So this would be for a wash tunnel and some vacuum stalls. Next slide. So it's currently vacant. Previously was part of a golf cart rental company, but that was demolished several years ago, and this is now, and has remained vacant since then. The proposed car wash is 114-foot wash tunnel and 11 vacuum stalls. That would be access from the existing drive that's shared with Murphy's, both with Exeter and University and 98. They have proposed additional vegetation as well as lighting and other landscaping around the edges in order to screen the area very well. There is no nearby residential property, and this conditional use permit does appear to be in alignment with the comprehensive plan and the land use plan based on both the location as well as buffering and the proposed conditions. Next slide. This is an overall site plan. So in the very center of the site are two rows of vacuum stalls. The wash tunnel would be between the vacuum stalls and the Murphy's Express, aligning pretty close to that rear property line. As you enter the site from 98, you would then go to the rear of the property along that angle where the drainage ditch is. There, there are some automatic pay stations, and from there you would select what type of car wash you want, and then you would circle around and enter the car wash tunnel. So that is the flow of the site. You would then exit onto the shared access drive, and you could either pull into the vacuum stall or simply exit the site. There is an emergency exit in case of malfunction of the car wash itself, or maybe your payment doesn't go through, something like that. So there is a small exit there at the very rear corner to the Murphy's parking lot. It would be an exit only, and there would be do not enter signs as well as some cautionary paint to the speed bump there to make sure that no traffic is coming into the site. Next slide. Here's the circulation plan, so you can see a car coming in off of 98, and then the queuing there along that lower diagonal where the drainage ditch is, and then the cars merge to single file before entering the car wash tunnel and then exiting onto the shared access plan. Excuse me, shared access drive. Next slide. Here's a landscape plan. There are currently some existing street trees along the front edge there with 98. The developer has proposed to buff that up with some hedges there below, as well as screening along the other side of the driveway. They've added several of these trees throughout the site, as well as a full row of hedges along that drainage ditch, and some other screening both in front of and behind the vacuum stalls. Next slide. The PNZ Commission did request the photometric plan just to make sure that the site is well-lit along that rear property line so that people are not driving off into that drainage ditch. So because they requested it, that photometric plan is now being included as part of the plan, so here it is. Next slide. Here are the elevations of the vacuum canopies. So they would have full masonry poles with the metal curve on top, as well as fully masonry enclosures for the vacuum machines themselves at the end of each row. Next slide. These are the elevations of the wash tunnel. Here you can see them in color. And then next slide. Oh, sorry, go back to the previous slide. I thought there was one more. So these do show a fully masonry exterior. There are some portions that are painted in the quick quack yellow, but the finishes are fairly in line with what we typically see in a CUP. Next slide. These are the current existing conditions. As you can see, it's a vacant site. The public hearing sign was posted as well for tonight, and this site would pair in very closely with that Murphy's Express. You can see in that center bottom photo that the existing drive is already there, and this site would simply be just behind that access drive. Next slide. This is the future land use plan. It does show this area as neighborhood, commercial, and services. So a automated facility, or a facility for automobiles is supported by that use, especially with the conditional use permit due to the fact that there is no neighborhood nearby. Next slide. A little recap of the commission. They did hold a public hearing in December, and no speakers were present. There were some minor edits requested, including adding the photometric plan and beefing up some landscaping, as well as that safety signage and painted speed bump at the emergency exit to the rear of the property. PNZ then held consideration and action on January 12th and unanimously approved the recommendation of approval to Mayor and City Council. Next slide. So your consideration points tonight, the site does have a history of auto-related businesses, and the neighboring development does have a CUP for gas sales. There is no nearby residential property, and this is supported by the future land use and comprehensive plans. The sites near other sites have similar intensity, including gas stations, grocery shopping centers, that type thing. And council may place additional conditions on the CUP if you do feel that is necessary. Next slide. Staff does recommend approval of this, I believe there's a slide missing here. Sorry about that, but staff does recommend approval, there you go, with the conditions as listed here on the slide that include compliance with the attached site plan, landscape plan, elevation, photometric, garage doors that need to be closed when not in operation, a two-exel limitation on maximum size, no outside storage of vehicles, equipment, or merchandise, and no outdoor speaker systems would be permitted. Staff and the applicant are here for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Laura. At this time, council members, what we'll do is we'll proceed with the public hearing. Following the public hearing, we'll open it up for questions from council members. This time, we're going to open the public hearing and ask anybody that would like to speak on this particular item, if they would like to speak. Thomas, has anybody logged in?
No, sir, and I don't have anybody signed up or written comments on this item as well.
Okay. All right, here we are now, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. We're going to move to first consideration. Consideration of an action on City of Sugar Land Ordinance Number 2223, in accordance with City Council, City of Sugar Land, Texas. Granting a conditional use permit for a car wash facility located on approximately .86 acres, located at the south corner of the intersection at US 98 and University Boulevard within the general business B2 zoning district. Questions, council members? William?
Yes, sir. I appreciate a good car wash. I've never heard of quick quack. I think I wanted to say that for some reason, but my question here is, having 11 vacuums and 114-foot tunnel, this sounds like a very attractive business for our community. Do we have an idea of their expectation of, you know, how busy will this be on 90? Will it be a problem on 90? Will it be welcome? Is it like a Mr. Car Wash or a Blue Wave? I mean, what are our expectations of busy to that intersection?
Well, staff did review traffic impact analysis and found that there was a minimal impact as far as the actual traffic on 90 and University, so that is not really an issue. As far as how many cars specifically will be at the facility at any given time, Joseph might be able to give you an answer for that, for their estimations. But as I mentioned, engineering did intensely, and public works traffic did intensely review the traffic impact analysis, so there should not be any major impact to the streets.
Super, thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Steve. Oh, I'm sorry. Steve, I keep forgetting to leave the screen. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. My question is, can we add a requirement that as long as the facility is open, it will be staffed with a minimum of one person so that they can ensure that any trash that gets out of the way from the people doing the vacuuming? Or if somebody would just get stuck in the tunnel, they could stop the process and muddy out and turn off the water so you didn't have to open your car door with the water squirting in?
Steve, the attorney, hey, Steve?
Can we edit?
No.
I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
The city attorney is giving me, she's about ready to throw something at me. You can't pursue that line of questioning, Steve. Merrif, would you like to help? She's going to come to the podium, Steve. That's the advantage of having Merrif in the council chambers now. I can see her when she's, when she has a slight issue with the conversation. Go ahead, Merrif.
Thank you, Mayor. The only conditions we can put on a CUP are those to mitigate any impacts to neighbors. And so as far as a customer being stuck in the tunnel, that does not really impact a neighbor. I have been to a quick quack car wash, and they do have people working all over the place. I don't believe it operates without a person, but I think the applicant wants to jump in if I would.
Steve's question was more on the, on a staffing question.
We cannot place any staffing requirements.
Okay, that's what I wanted to address. We can't address staffing for the operation.
It does not mitigate adverse impacts to neighboring properties.
Even if the neighbor's the one stuck in the tunnel, it's impacting them.
Commissioner, Councilmember Porter, Joseph, I'm just with the applicant. I let you know, we don't open unless there's at least one member there, one staff member there to operate the car wash anyway. So you're clear, you're safe, because, yeah, we want, they have to take the car wash order. Again, we just don't open without one or two staff members present.
There you go, Steve. He can address it, you just couldn't ask it.
Well, it impacts my neighbor if my neighbor gets stuck in it.
I understand. Can I get a motion?
It impacts my neighbor if the trash goes out on 98.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Got a motion by Carmali, do I have a second?
Second by McCutcheon.
Got a second by McCutcheon. You'll vote at this time, please. And it's unanimous, it's a 7-0 vote. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number four, ordinances and resolutions for a first and final consideration. Consideration of an action on City of Sugar Land Ordinance Number 2225, in accordance with the City Council, City of Sugar Land, Texas. Declaring unopposed candidates in the May 1st, 2021 election and canceling the election for single-member districts. Two and three of the City Council of City of Sugar Land. Thomas Harris III, our City Secretary, Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brief pause, though, Talia is here if you would like to put mine on hold. I'm pleased to say mine's the shortest presentation of the night, so if you'd like to go ahead and skip to that, I can pause.
Why don't, let's go ahead and finish this item, and then I'll, we'll go immediately to Talia.
Okay, yes, sir. Quick and easy, all the declarations for candidacy have expired. We only have one candidate in the District 2 and District 3 races, that is the incumbent sitting on the dais with you, Noshad Carmali, and Stuart Jacobson. So by statute, the council can cancel the elections for those two districts. The candidates will take office as normal, the regular office holders. Once the election is canvassed, insignia will be posted at election locations to let voters know, since we do use county-wide polling locations, that the elections for District 2 and District 3 races only have been canceled. Next slide, please. With that said, staff recommends that on first and final consideration, the council approve Ordinance Number 2225, canceling the District 2 and District 3 races for election on May 1st, 2021. Next slide, please. You happy to clarify any questions for you?
Can't imagine that we're not going to get any.
Let's fight for it. We're going to fight for it.
I would love to move to approve that, and I bet.
And I will gladly second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh that one.
I've got a motion by Jacobson, he got there first. Carmali, no surprise that the two council members that had no opponents are ready to close out this deal. I've got a first, I've got a second, a few of those this time, please.
Try make it interesting and vote against it.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Okay, at this time, I'm going to invite Talia, if you'd like to come down. Good evening. We had a great presentation, read the proclamation, but we were hoping that she would be here.
Yes, a car accident out of the front.
Well, that's understandable. So what we wanted to do, we read the proclamation. So what we wanted to do, we read the proclamation, I'm going to give it to you, we'll have a chance to take pictures, but would you like to say something?
Sure. So I think it's really amazing that we're declaring theater in our schools month for like the first part, especially since in like the South in Texas, the arts aren't necessarily, we're not given emphasis, we're not given a voice, and this is the first step in giving young artists a voice, and it's, it's just, it's a foundation that we can build advocacy off of, because children in the arts, they flourish, they excel, the arts, they improve test scores, they, they make children more sociable, and this proclamation means such a great deal to so many people, and I wish they could be here to see it, but thank you.
Yes, members, would you all like to go down? We'll put you in the middle of the council.
We can do it.
You guys, I think you guys are probably friends. Move up a little bit, guys. There we go. Carmelli, you good?
What do you think, sir? Come on, point it. Okay, everybody, let me hear. One, two, three, one, two, three, last one, one, two, three. Looks great, thank you all.
You got it? You okay?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you all for coming. And we did, we did an introduction as being, you were very passionate about, about the arts, and we wish you all the best. We're going to move on now to item number five, workshop, private review of and discussion on City of Sugarland Police Department 2020 Annual Report. We have with us our police chief, Eric Robbins. Eric, I know you're here, this is always a great competition between fire and police. I know Chief Booker, how'd you let, Doug, I got to ask you, how'd you let Eric get in front of you? I mean, I would have never done that. I would have made sure I was the first man up, then I'd go ahead and get out of here.
I have great confidence in Chief Robbins. We have an awesome police department. Our citizens are well-served by that department, and it's my pleasure to allow them to go first. I think we'll be very pleased. Robbins has ups his game a bit this year, and I've seen his slides, you guys are in for a real treat.
There we go. I don't want to, Doug, I don't want to play the gentleman. Chief Robbins, Eric, would you like to go ahead?
I just don't know how to follow that, because he's going to do a fantastic job, I'm certain of it, I've seen his presentation as well.
Mayor, I'm starting to get worried now.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you, guys, for having me here. I am outstandingly honored to be here and pleased to present before you our police department's annual report. But before I start, Mayor, Council, I would like to first and foremost just introduce my command staff. I believe they're in the, in the video right now, it'd be Assistant Chief Michelle Allen, Assistant Chief James Davis, captains Chris Thompson, Todd Zettlemore, Danny Cornelius, and Pete Lara. So thank you, and I also have in the room with me my prime analyst, and she's the one who's responsible for getting all the data that you're about to see tonight, which is Leslie Wilson. So I couldn't do it without these ladies and gentlemen, but also I'm just super proud, not only of our command staff, but the men and women of the Sugarland Police Department. They do an outstanding job day to day, and actually it's your police department, as I should say, but they do an outstanding job. I would talk about it a little bit in our citizen satisfaction survey that we had just a little, a couple of months ago, that talks about what type of work and outstanding work to be it. But also, I'll preface this presentation that you're about to see, obviously we're going to talk about crime stats, specific crimes and stuff like that, calls for service, traffic safety, but I'll preface this presentation with the fact that your city is one of the safest cities, not only in the state, but in the nation. Our crime stats will show that we have the safest city here that we've ever had, so I'm proud of that, and I'm proud of the police department, and I'm just excited for what you're about to see. And obviously, we know this was not a normal year with the COVID pandemic and everything, majority of people quarantined at home, so people were not moving around as much, but so it's going to be understandable, you're going to see some things, it's going to be down, there's going to be some activity that's going to be down, but it's going to still be a great report. Next slide, please. Next slide, thank you. Last year, as you all know, we began the transition from our uniform crime reporting to what we call a national incident-based reporting system, and this was mandated that we go to this format by the FBI, who tracks all of our crimes and all of our data. So we actually had to be in compliance with this for this year, but we got into it last year, so we're a little bit ahead of the game. But as you can see, the crimes in black are our original crimes that I've always reported to you over the last few years, our Part 1 crimes, you hear me talk about UCR versus divers here a little bit, but you'll see that these were the actual crimes, but also there's like 24 total, what they call Part 8 crimes now are divers that we have to also report. So next slide, please. Our crime rate, as I said, it is down. The actual crime rate, and for comparison purposes, we're looking at what we call the uniform crime report, we're putting right now, and we have one of the lowest crime rates ever. Crime rate now is 11.04, which is down 26% from last year, 14.21. So the crime rate represents the crimes per 1,000 residents, so just so you know that and you kind of understand, again, this was a phenomenal year, low activities, but phenomenal year. Next slide, please. And this here just shows how we compare to the state and nation, and the nation. Obviously, we are lower, as you can see, we don't have 2020 crime statistics for the state and the nation, however, we are still trending, as we've always have, at a lower rate than the nation. In the previous years, we were 26% lower than the state, and 57% lower than the nation, so great, great information right there. Next slide, please. When we annex Greatwood and New Territory, we actually increased our population, as we all know, but it put us in a different category of cities that we kind of compare ourselves to. This here is showing there are 22 cities within the population of 100 to 150,000 population. Of those 22, we are ranked number four of the safest city with the lowest crime rate, I should say. As you can see, we have the lowest violent crime rate, but when you throw in property crime with that, it actually puts us up a little bit, but we're still at number four. Other cities, just for your information, as it goes down the list in particular order, followed by League City would be Pearland, College Station, Round Rock, Richardson, Benton, Lewisville, McAllen, Abilene, Edinburgh, Tyler, Wichita, San Angelo, Waco, and that's a mosquito in Beaumont. So we're ranked pretty high in that population category. Next slide, please. Now, we're looking at our local crime rate. Here it is, what we look at and compare ourselves to the surrounding cities. As you can see, we're still very, very low compared to the other cities. One thing you can't see is Missouri City has a slight lower property crime rate than us, but violent crime, and these are looking at 2019 numbers, obviously because 2020 stats for all these other cities have not been published yet. Next slide, please. And custodial arrests, as I talked about, activity was down, crime is down, so is arrest, so it just kind of falls in line with what's happening, what happened this past year. Next slide, please. UCR clearance rate, this is something that we are truly looking at. What I can tell you is our crimes that gets cleared this past year in 2019, we had because of the courts, with the whole COVID situation, because of the courts being slowed down, there were several of our cases that we have filed that did not get cleared, particularly this, this past year, just because of what was happening around us. Next slide, please. Next slide. Assaults, as you can see, assaults are down. But one thing we did pay attention to, and what really went up was actually aggravated assaults, but also family violence. Family violence, in specific, we saw a few things happening, we even saw a few actually murders this past year with some death involved. We saw some road rage incidents. We had, we were paying close attention to mental health and people in crisis, so we paid a lot of attention to those kinds of cases. Majority of things that we normally see were down, but these were the cases that we saw that kind of went up, but assaults overall were down from the previous year. Next slide, please. Mental health, I talked a little bit about that, what we did, we paid close attention, and we started doing some things that we want to make sure that we are providing the best services to our residents and our citizens out there, so we partnered with National Suicide Prevention and get that word out about what people can do to actually, you know, seek help and receive help. We partnered with our local hospitals, our mental health authorities, we've launched a mental health resource campaign on our Facebook page, we're enhancing our crisis intervention training for officers, we've had officers go out and do ride-alongs with other agencies just to understand what is really happening in this particular situation, and so we're going to do as much as we can to get the word out, but also to train our officers and train our staff. Next slide, please. This is slide frauds, is more of a FYI. I want people to start to understand, especially with the recent freeze that we just had, I want people to truly understand, to be aware, and how to protect themselves from scams. There are lots of scams out there, there are lots of people that will probably be trying to take advantage of our residents and our citizens, whether they using, charging their companies, tax frauds, or anything like that. One thing I can tell you, if you receive a call of government agents, such as the FBI or police departments, including Sugarland Sheriff's Offices, IRS, they will not call you asking for money. So that's something I want our residents to know. Fraud actually were down, but again, we did see some, some issues with our postal services and whatnot, so we want to make sure people are understanding how to protect themselves, so we will continue to get the word out. Next slide, please. Auto thefts. Auto thefts was up a little bit, and as you can see, these are particular, specific types of vehicles that were stolen, trucks, SUVs, and whatnot. We didn't see any major trend as far as locations. We do see from time to time our parking garages, for example, at the hospitals and whatnot, where there's lots of people gathered, we see thefts in those particular locations, but we didn't see anything significant, but we paying close attention to those. Next slide, please. Thefts, obviously, activity was down, yeah, activity was down, shoplifting was something that was surprisingly down, but again, it didn't stop us, it didn't stop, you know, particular cases such as burglars and motor vehicles from happening, but overall, thefts were down about 23%. Next slide, please. And then we look at specific thefts, like what we call burglary of motor vehicles or thefts from cars. In 2019, we saw 550, in 2020, we had 512, so they were down about 7%. 40% of the BMWs that we saw had windows shattered, 36% were just unlocked vehicles, and we constantly get that message out to lock your cars, lock your cars. But you can see here what the top locations are, basically neighborhoods, a lot of them are neighborhoods, from time to time, we do see some shoppers, but just, we see these individuals that go in looking for value, looking for items, pulling door handles and those kind of things, so please, please, lock your cars. Next slide, please. Now this here just give you an understanding, when I talk about activity being down, traffic stops down, calls for service down, court system down, jails are down, but we were still busy. We were getting out, looking at grocery stores, our parks, we saw a huge activity and increase in the usage at our city parks, our trails, our bike trails, so we continued to get out there, do foot patrols, bicycle patrols, and those kind of things. We put a serious emphasis on mental health and crisis intervention training, and just also working through the COVID crisis, disinfecting cars and those kind of things, but we still are out there doing strong visibility. Next slide, please. Almost made it very short this year. Calls by beat, and this is what I want to make everybody pay attention to, is our beats, our city is divided into six geographical police beats, and at times, some, some beats feel that they get more attention or less attention, but as you can see, Beat 6 and Beat 1, Beat 1 for geographical purposes is basically everything north of Highway 98, and of course, Beat 6 is mainly Greatwood River Park, and it even has the Brazos River Park there, but the call volumes are pretty much equal, and this includes traffic stops, all the activities, suspicious vehicle calls, and all of the calls for service. But also, our residential beats are fairly similar as well, the rest of them, Beat 3, 4, and 5. Beat 2, as we all know, is commercial areas, particularly Tech Town Square, the mall, the shopping centers, along Highway 59 corridor, so yes, we do get quite a few calls over in those areas, particularly dealing with those businesses, and we staff accordingly for that, so. Next slide, please. Top call locations, this is, I don't know if it's surprising to most, but the hospitals, we get quite a few calls at the hospitals. The type of calls we get at these hospitals are family violence calls, assaults, rapes, death investigations, and a lot of these calls are residents or people who do not live in Sugarland, but they come to our hospitals, so we spend quite a bit of time in our hospitals, but obviously, you know, Walmart and some of the box stores are always common, but just again, give you an idea of where we spend a lot of time and where we take a lot of calls for service at. Next slide, please. Police response time, this is basically how we get measured on how we're responding and comparing to other cities, what we call, how we become one of the safest cities, is how we respond. We try to respond, or our goal is to respond to every, what we call a priority call, which is an in-progress type of call, we want to be there within seven minutes, and that's from the time the dispatcher receives the call to the time the officer responds to the call. And as you can see, these are broken down by the quarter for 2020. Obviously, we fell a little short in quarter 4, but you know, some of the reasons for that is it's a moving target, we see things, for example, like road rage, we're trying to either catch up to a suspect or something like that, so everyone's, once in a while, there's some factors that affect those type of response calls and response times. Next slide, please. Please, next slide. Traffic safety, as I mentioned earlier, citations, warnings, but it's just, I think it goes hand in hand with everything else. We're trying not to subject our citizens to unnecessary traffic violations, however, it's still important, we're still looking at what we consider the top accident locations, and I'll talk about those in a minute, top locations where we receive complaints at, but obviously, as you can see, our warnings, citations, and traffic stop were a little bit down, and that's something we will continue to focus on going forward as activity is picking back up, as I just heard the governor just open up the state to 100%, so we will, I believe we will be a little bit busier. Next slide, please. Majority of what we write are typical speeding, but as you can see, it's almost 50/50 with the amount of citations versus warning, and then it just goes in line behind that. So citations, we only focus on what is really truly necessary to continue to make our city safe, our streets safe, for our driving public. Next slide, please. Top collision factors, as you can see, nothing surprising there, that goes in line with the amount of, the type of enforcement that we provide, which is, a lot of it is speeding, but also for accidents, it's unsafe lane check agents, of course, not standing lanes. A lot of people always ask me, what about distracted driving? What about cell phones? When we're looking at these collisions, basically, it's more of a voluntary basis that people have to tell you if they were using their cellphone or not, but if we can identify that that was a factor, we definitely note that. Next slide, please. And this is just giving you an understanding, it's a heat map of where the actual top locations are, specifically, as we always know, Highway 6 and 59 is one of our top locations, as well as Highway 6 and Highway 90. 59, Highway 6, last year, we saw 28 accidents in that specific intersection, and 6 and 90, we saw about 19. So when we're focusing our enforcement efforts and working with our traffic division over at engineering, and trying to come up with all kinds of ways to mitigate these accidents, that's what we look at, is where they happening at. that's what we look at is where they happening at. Next slide, please. In addition, we continuously utilizing technology, our private venture camera program, it kind of got slowed down a little bit. We did have a actual consultant that was working with us prior to the pandemic and we kind of had to slow down a little bit. But we want to continue looking at our use of technology, LPR license plate recognition systems. And so what we have done, we started partnering with our neighborhoods and our HOA. Sugar Creek, for example, has LPR cameras, Greatwood purchases, system of LPR cameras and so on. So we want to continue to partner. We got other neighborhoods who have talked about it, such as Alcott, First Colony, the mall, the Methodist. All these areas want to do technology as far as license plates. So we're going to continue to partner with them. We've seen some great successes and I'll talk a little bit about that, but we've seen some great successes in capturing criminals coming into our city, whether they're coming in with a stolen vehicle. Typically, they're coming in to do something else. Next slide, please. I talked a little bit about it, but Alcott Lake, we had some home invasions, we had some burglaries that happened, some crews out of the Houston area. But with our LPR information, the data that we received from that LPR system, we were able to work with surrounding agencies, City of Houston and others, Willbourn County, and were able to literally locate some subjects and individuals who were responsible for committing these crimes. So again, it is a great tool, a great resource for us and we want to continue to utilize different types of technology to help our city and continue to be safe. Next slide, please. Almost done. I talked about the citizen satisfaction survey. As you can see, police protection was one of the top things that they talked about. Police response, as I mentioned earlier. We saw basically protection, when I talk about quality of police protection from a city and a state perspective, Sugar Land was 92% compared to the United States as well as Texas. The United States was 62% as far as satisfaction survey. The response times, 85% for Sugar Land, 62% for the nation and 63% for the state. So we are high. This is basically the citizens saying what they, what we mean to the city and how we perform and how we do our job. So I think this is saying a whole lot for our police department. Not saying it's nothing we can do better, but it's saying a lot that our citizens are satisfied with us. Next slide, please. And as I start wrapping this up, I just kind of hit the highlights on some of our 2020 accomplishments and then talk a little bit about our priorities. But we continue to actually hire people. All right, we got a couple of new positions, thanks to council, thanks to all your support. But we got a couple of new positions that was added. One was a crime scene technician, the other was a traffic officer. But the crime scene technician is something that is desperately needed to help us when we're doing our investigations, behind the scene, forensic labs and those kind of things. But also we hired a communications and community engagement specialist. And I say we hired him, but it was in partnership with our communications, Doug Adolf and his team. But we got a young lady who's working for us and she's doing an outstanding job of basically helping keeping our community engagement with our community through social media. And of course, we got 10 new police officers. It's a continuous job to get police officers hired and get them not only hired, but trained into a program. It takes about a year to get an officer through the entire program. So we're constantly working to keep our staffing up and make sure we have the right amount of officers to protect our city. And of course, as you can see, there were some other things we did. Even through the pandemic, we continued our partnership with Fort Ben Simmons Meals on Wheels, which I'm proud of. And we continue delivering meals. I think that is a well-worthy service that we provide to make sure our citizens not only can see us, but we can check on them and see how they're doing as well. Next slide, please. Of course, our work at our firearms range, public safety training facility will continue. We have to make sure we get all of the necessary things that we need. There's a lot more things that we need at the firearm range, like the driving track, like the hothouse and different things, do some different types of training, simulation training and those kind of things. We're continuously working with our facilities department in the city for building rehabilitation. For example, this year we got a brand new group, excited about that. Something we desperately need that the building is aging. But we continue to maintain our accreditation status, permission on accreditation for law enforcement agencies. Basically, when you hear things that's going on around the nation about policing and you hear talk about use of force and de-escalation, this accreditation body basically keeps us in line. We actually just went through a process this past week to have outside independent auditors literally get into our department, find out what we're doing, look at our standards, look at our policies and our procedures and find out if we're doing it right. And it's a bit of report to us. So it helps us stay in line with what's going on around the nation. And we want to continue with our certification and our, basically our accreditation for our lab, our American National Standards Institute for our forensic laboratories. So we want to continue these things. Next slide, please. And as we move forward, technology is going to be a big deal, technology training. When I talk about technology, I'm talking about not only drones, body cameras, what else can we do? There's so much advancing in this. What else can we do with cell phones and the data that we receive, cell phones? How can we catch criminals and make sure that they're not coming into our city? They have a lot of money, so sometimes we're a little bit behind the curve, but looking at the technology, the license plate recognition program, continuously expanding that program. And of course, training. We cannot, you know, over emphasize training because with the brand new officers we have, all the things that's happening out in the public, we have to continuously give them and provide them the training.[976.98]
And I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Eric. Great report. And I think it's evident to all the officers that you've got there on the screen, what I'll refer to as the team. You guys have done a phenomenal job, not only in trying circumstances, not only during a pandemic, but recently when we had this Arctic blast that came through. I know we had officers out there that were out there turning off water. Now, I don't think they teach that in the academy, but that's pretty much who we are as a city. We do whatever it takes to get the job done and deliver for our residents. So, thank you all. Thank you for your commitment. Thank you for your dedication, and thank you for your service to the citizens of Sugar Land. Councilmember's questions? Anybody?
I'd love to say something.
Go ahead, Will.
To all the police officers, you guys are great. As a police officer myself, I look at you guys with great pride. I am so proud to tell our community that you're the best. I mean, you guys really did great last year. Your leadership is exceptional, and I am so glad to say I know many of you, and God bless you all.
Thanks, Eric.
Carol?
Yes, Chief, I would just like to thank you for such a great report. And, you know, as you know, safety is our top priority. So, from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for everything that our police department does to keep our city safe.
Thank you.
Chief, you upped your game. Where's Booker? Is he in the audience? Steve, I'm sorry. Steve Porter. Steve, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a question for the chief. In the traffic stop statistics, there's a number that's a total, and then there's a citation and a warning. And I'm assuming that the number of warnings is actual written warnings as opposed...and the difference between those two are verbal warnings that say, "Just be safer." What you did wasn't...didn't rise to a written warning. But, and so, am I right in interpreting that?
That is absolutely correct. But what I can tell you is based off of the Sandra Blair report that we have to do, anytime we make a traffic stop, we have to document that information. So, but if there's a verbal warning, it is not counted in these statistics that you see in, correct. That's correct.
Okay. I guess, and I say that to make sure I understood. But, in the case of school zone speeding, do we ever just let somebody off with a verbal warning as opposed to a written warning? I would really like to see anybody speeding in a school zone get something in writing.
I appreciate hearing that, and definitely I will share that. But it can definitely be done. It just depends on what's happening with that officer at the time. You know, sometimes they may not have the time, but specifically, we want to basically change the driver's behavior when they're speeding or they're speeding through a school zone. So, a lot of times, we may have to just write the citation, but a warning, it just depends on those circumstances with that officer and that individual that they stop. Sometimes people just not paying attention, but at the same time, we want it to be safe because it's about those kids in those schools all. So, we're out there. We work with our partners, with what Ben ISB Police Department, but we want to make sure that we are out there ensuring that people are slowing down for our kids.
Yeah. Yeah. I'd just like to see some kind of zero tolerance around school zones. That's a...you guys do a great job. I'm not complaining at all. I'm just thinking about the consequences. But thank you so much for what you do. Great year.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Good job, guys. Audit number 5B. Review of and discussion on City Sugar Land Fire EMS Department Fiscal Year 2020 Annual Report. We have Chief Doug Booker.
All right. Sounds like Eric's doing a little celebratory...
He's still on the mic. He better turn that mic off. He gonna get himself in trouble.
It always happens. It always happens. I thought it happened to you, Doug, but sorry.
It's okay. Every now and then, you get to celebrate. So, I concur with Chief Robbins. What a fantastic job the police department has done this year. We work hand in hand with those folks daily. At the street level, I can't imagine the relationship being any stronger. At the command level, it's a healthy relationship, and we're always looking to do each other, to help each other's departments. So, thanks to the command staff and PD for all that they bring to the table. It is my distinct honor to speak to you this evening and bring you our FY20 annual report. I'm joined this evening by Chiefs Crespo, Cramire, Vontz, and King. I'm also joined remotely via YouTube with seven fire stations that are in and out, running calls, serving the citizens of Sugar Land, and they're led today by Roman Martin, Compton, Havelberger, Hannah, Fan, and Rogers. A very talented group of responders across our city, and they do a fantastic workforce. Tonight, we're going to talk about those very responders and the strong work that they did for us over the year. It looks like we're already queued up to the second slide, and we streamlined our operations a couple of years ago, went to two service areas instead of four divisions. We continue to have operations and code enforcement that works for us and allows us a lot of interdepartmental communication and coordination. Next slide, please. We serve the citizens out of seven distinct fire stations plus an annex, the admin building out of City Hall Annex. We serve not only the city limits, but ETJ areas on the fireside. Our EMS service is restricted to city limits. So, you'll see, we cover Tera, south of Greatwood, down towards Thompson's. We also cover the Sarchar area in new territory that was an annexed area. Next slide, please. We have 131 authorized positions, and what I wanted to do is just let you know how many boots on the ground. We have 113 people in operations and seven code enforcement personnel. So, that's 120 of our 131 personnel that are actually serving the end user. We're very...we try and operate a very lean operation and administration, and we're able to do that because of the talented skill sets of our responders in the fire station. They take on a lot of administrative duties for us, so that we're able to shut the labor force out to the fire stations. We have six in command and fire admin. We have five civilian employees. Next slide, please. We don't provide fire and EMS service based on per capita ratios, but we do watch that in the fire service to see as a measure of efficiency and see how we compare to others. You'll see, we're towards the left end of this. We're fifth from the end of firefighters per citizen. I think it's an interesting measure. And especially when you look at the four cities to the left of us, there's distinct notice, distinct differences. Arlington and Fort Worth might have less firefighters per citizen, but they also don't provide EMS. They contract EMS through a third party. Brownsville and Garland are both considerably larger. Brownsville is about 50% larger than Sugar Land. Garland is about 100% larger than Sugar Land. So, they have a ton of scale factors, and Brownsville uses a different standard of coverage that wouldn't work for our call distribution. So, as we look at cities across the state, we're very lean by most measures. Next slide, please. We operate with a $16.7 million budget. 92.1% of that is labor alone. So, across-the-board cuts of, you know, are always kind of detrimental to a heavy labor force budget such as fire. Our ONM budget this year, we were able to take out a percentage cut because of COVID losses, and we had no capital projects this year. Next slide, please. Going into the year, we had high hopes. And I'll tell you, there was another slide that's going to tell you this, but I don't want to forget this point. One year from tomorrow, I sat with you doing this same report last year. It was March 3, 5:30 PM. We sat with council and gave our annual report and laid out our plan for the next year, and that was at 5:30 in the afternoon. At 7:30 that same day, Sugar Land had its first COVID patient, and the whole plan changed. This is what we were going to work on this year, and we spent our year dealing with COVID amongst other things. We wanted to hit strategic planning and master planning. We are working on a master plan that is not a traditional master plan in the city census as far as an ordinance, accepting it by ordinance. But we want to be able to plan a little further than annually for our programs and projects. The community engagement, that's probably what was hit the hardest for us with COVID. We were a very social department, not in the community every chance we had. We've had to pull that back considerably. I think Chief King's done an interesting job of keeping us relevant and the public virtually, but it's certainly been hard with COVID. Maintaining service levels and critical infrastructure, that was an asset management project that had to do with our heavy fleet along with our staffing ratios. Process improvement, that's something that we have delivered on this year and continue to work on. Just everything we do, we capture it to a plan so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel next time. And then finally, our health, safety, and wellness. This goes right along with council's purchase of a second set of bunker gear last year. We're using that for the best interest of our firefighters in keeping them safe. And that wasn't a one-stop shop. We continue to put effort towards the health, safety, and wellness of our personnel. Next slide, please. The city's very transparent in its goal measures and the dashboard available on the city's website. This is a snippet from that website. We're going to talk specifically about fire and EMS response times later in the program, but this is just a general reminder to the public to use the website. It's very user-friendly. If they go to the website and search for dashboard, they can get the same information. Next slide, please. Our fire EMS goal measures, we try to get to every call within eight and a half minutes at an 80 percentile, frac tile reporting period. And you can see here, we've struggled over the years, through the year on the fire time. March is when COVID hit us, and there's an interesting slide coming up just a few from here that I'll be able to explain that to you. But our unit utilization went through the roof with COVID, and we struggled on some of our response times. Fire is always difficult for us because about a large percentage of our calls are not static addresses. So, if it's a house or a building on fire, that building didn't move on us. We can find it pretty easily. If it's a car on fire and it continues to drive down the freeway, sometimes it's a moving target, and we struggle to find car fires, grass fires, things like that, because people, they see a sign and they'll say, "I'm at 59 in Sweetwater," but really, they're at the Sweetwater two miles ahead sign. And so, that's some of our problems when it comes to arrival time. We'll talk a bit more about this. Next slide, please. We had a reduction in overall calls this year, which I think most people would find interesting. With COVID, you would think EMS calls went up. There was a real shift late spring and through summer. The public didn't know how not to catch COVID, but they knew where it was. They knew it was in the ERs, and they decided not to be transported to the hospital. Our 911 calls went down, and our refusal rates went way up. People would call us for primary healthcare advice and then not want to be transported. So, our refusals went up and calls went down. This 9,300, you know, a couple hundred call drop for us still taxed our service because of the longevity of each call. We went, prior to COVID, our average ambulance transport time was 61 minutes. Post-COVID, our ambulance transport times went upwards of 180 minutes, three times the average ambulance transportation time. And that has to do with new protocols put in place, PPE measures that were taken, and hospital turnover procedures that were put in place at the emergency rooms. Then we had to decon, deep clean every ambulance before it could make the next call. So, our unit utilization went up significantly this year. Next slide, please. Our incidents by month, you can see when COVID, COVID kind of came into the public eye around March, and we started dropping on calls in April. While we were ramped up and preparing for the worst, our calls actually went down. It was good because it seems like an eternity ago, but when COVID first started, PPE was nowhere to be found. And we started very strong. We had about a 10-year supply of PPE on hand until COVID hit, and we found that we had about a six-month burn rate because our burn rate had gone up so significantly. And so, because the calls went down, we had time to regroup, and we went about four or five levels deep in our COVID planning for PPE to make sure that we could keep our personnel and city staff safe. Next slide, please. This looks at the days, at the hours of each day and when we have calls, and we're using this information to look at some dynamic scheduling possibilities. It might be that flat staffing might not work for us. Right now, we have minimum staffing on our apparatus, and it looks like our needs overnight kind of go down. We use this to our advantage sometimes when we're analyzing overtime calls or overtime expenses and staffing plans. So, I just think it's interesting. From roughly 7:00 AM to about midnight, we're a fairly busy department, and overnight, we slow down a bit. Next slide, please. This is a breakdown. The reduction that we had in calls almost entirely is in the EMS arena. We were about 67%, 68% EMS calls last year. This year, we're 63. Our fire calls are relatively flat. Rescue calls are flat. I think the interesting box here is the one on the right. When those 9,300 calls, those translate into 14,500 apparatus responses. That is a 19.1% increase in apparatus responses to go to less calls, by the way. That's a requirement of COVID as we're using fire apparatus to decon ambulances, to get that ambulance crew out of the PPE. They've been in for an hour and a half, two, three hours sometimes. We'll send the fire truck out and use the services of the air system on the fire apparatus to decon that ambulance. We've since shifted. Last month, council approved the purchase of four additional aeroclave cleaners for us so that those ambulances can be deep cleaned in the bays of the stations they reside in. We were doing this in the AMC parking lot for the last six months, using an empty parking lot to decon our ambulances to keep our workforce safe. Next slide, please. Here's our fire responses. 136, out of the 9,300, 136 calls attributed to direct fire. 17 of those, we did not meet the mark on the eight and a half minutes. That's 12.5% that didn't meet the mark. Our average arrival fire time was 6 minutes and 45 seconds. But I think always most notable is the structure fires. In most cases, that's where the life hazard is, is in structure fires. And so, those 28 structure fires we had this year, we had an average arrival time of 5 minutes and 55 seconds. Last year, we had 24 structure fires...I'm sorry. The year prior, we had 24 structure fires, and so, we did have an increase of eight additional structure fires in FY20. Next slide, please. Again, reiterating of a 6-minute, 45-second average response time, a 1 minute and 30-second arrival of a second unit, that's an increase from last year. And again, this is attributable to the usage, unit utilization of our fire apparatus as decon units. We went from 1 minute and 1 second average arrival of a second unit to 1 minute and 30 seconds, significant decrease for that second apparatus. And another shift, last year, our number one fire, I'm sorry, in FY19, our number one fire was attic fires, and that was attributable to a single day of lightning strikes. This year, kitchen fires was our leading cause, and nine kitchen fires. We attribute that to people being home because of COVID, and they're cooking more and not eating out as much. Also, they're cooking three meals a day in the house instead of, in some cases, instead of in some cases, cooking only one. Next slide, please. So, we always break down our, excuse me, our fires into minor, moderate, and major. And we do that. It's a complex look at how much time we spend on scene, how much damage there was, whether it was livable or not, what the overall impact to the homeless. And I said the same line last year, and I'll repeat, any fire in your house is a big deal. So, it's not my intent to trivialize a fire in somebody's house with this slide, but some fires are easier to recover from. And so, we showed this picture last year as a representative fire of a moderate fire. This was a fire in a wall. Our crew came in, removed the stove, removed the countertop, removed the wall to make sure that the fire was out. And then you'll notice they even mopped the floor and swept up the debris and took everything out. This house is livable. It's a big deal for that family, but it's not a house that...a fire that displaces them. So, for us, 18 of our 28 fires, 64% were minor fires. Another 25% were fires similar to this picture. So, and three major fires. Next slide, please. On the EMS side, we had a three-second longer arrival time, 6 minutes and 48 seconds on average. That's pretty good when you factor, we have seven fire districts, but we only have four ambulance districts. So, the response times are, the response distances are a bit longer on the ambulance versus the fire truck. We think they get there faster because they're smaller and lighter, and they navigate a bit better than an 80,000-pound ladder truck. You'll see our top five medical responses by incident. And we saw a marked increase in both sick persons and breathing problems. We're attributing this to COVID. And this is a great time to stop and talk about the people providing the service. Our firefighter paramedics are the true frontline responders to COVID. They're the first people to encounter a possible COVID patient. They do the work of analyzing what's the best care and treatment plan for that person, and then they ride in an ambulance that's about five feet by seven feet, 35 square feet of proximity to a known COVID-positive patient with the highest level PPE that we can buy. We protect them as best we can. But that takes true, that's a true hero that does that, that cares so much for their fellow man, that they're riding in an ambulance with somebody they know has a disease that we don't know everything about. True heroes riding our fire and EMS apparatus. And I just can't overstate how proud I am of their performance this year. Next slide, please. We had 78 cardiac arrests, and this was an initiative that we started over a year ago and was kind of sidelined because of COVID. Sugar Land Fire Department found a program in North Texas called the Heart Health, the Heart Safe Program. We thought that it added value to our community, and we brought it to our regional RAC, Set Tract, if you might be familiar with. They've donated certain things to this fire department. And not only did we bring the program to them, we rewrote the program, we formatted the program, and were the first applicant to the program. It has since been shifted to a heart-healthy community program, and we're number one in line for approval. Whether or not it goes through, we are a healthier community because of that program. It caused us to initiate additional CPR training. We made contact with area restaurants, and we're able to expect healthy heart choices on restaurant menus. We reached out to the school district, and we're able to provide safety and training to their staff that aligns with the heart-healthy community program. And we focus on end results now. As part of that program, we get feedback from the hospitals for every patient we take in from our local hospitals so that we can measure efficacy of effort for best outcome for not only current patients, but future patients. Next slide, please. This shows our EMS, where our EMS calls are, and they cluster heavily. And this is a 3D GIS file that shows graphically how we have just a few addresses that call for service very many times per year. We saw a reduction in the number of calls from these distinct addresses this year because we went into a COVID protocol, and we educated some of the facilities into using their emergency transportation contracts instead of 911. Next slide, please. With that, we still find that we increasingly are providing service to assisted livings and nursing homes. These are our top users of our service. 271 individual calls for service to Brookwood on Lexington, 157 distinct calls to 7,001 Riverbrook, which is an assisted and independent living facility. We have not been successful at changing the call behaviors. Because of COVID, we can't get in and provide the community outreach and the education to prevent some of these calls. The only outlier here is the Extended Stay Hotel right in the middle. We had 60 calls for service at Extended Stay Hotel. We had several fires in that building and a couple of occupants that we became primary healthcare apparently for for some period of time. Next slide, please. We always look at cardiac arrest, strokes, and STEMI's. These are three of the big things going on in EMS. Cardiac arrest went down. We measure the amount of time we spend on scene and the outcomes on cardiac arrest patients. Strokes and STEMI's both had sizable increases. We had 10 additional STEMI's and 11 additional strokes. I would suggest that probably, we're getting better as we train our crews and we have better diagnostic equipment. We're getting better at recognizing code STEMI's and calling them. And it's not actually more population is having, more of our residents are having strokes and STEMI's. I think we're just getting better at recognizing it and delivering a faster treatment, definitive care plan to them. We called for Lifelight six times this year. The last time, we used them four. And kind of notable, our top five hospital destinations, our three local hospitals continue to be the main recipients of our patients. The big change here is Memorial Human Medical Center. We drove to the medical center 69 times last year. And you might remember, I had mentioned last year that Memorial Southwest had dropped its trauma designation. They were previously designated as a trauma hospital, and we took a number of patients there each year. When they dropped their trauma registration, we were without trauma service for some period of time. Oak Bend-Jackson Street has really upped their service. We went there 48 times to drop off critical patients, and increasingly, we're going to the medical center. What that means for us is as if COVID doesn't take enough of our apparatus time from us, we're now going to the medical center about every third day, which turns into a three-hour ambulance trip, turns into a five-hour ambulance trip now to make sure we're getting our patients to the right facility. Most recently, what we're recognizing is system saturation across the ERs, and it's not uncommon. We've sent ambulances to Kingwood, Clear Lake, Pearland, Southeast, all of these hospitals in the last month, just to find a place that's appropriate for our patient. Next slide, please. With COVID, the number one thing we did was take care of our people, and it was hard when we didn't know what we didn't know. COVID came at us very fast, and the information was changing daily. I really, I really want to recognize the effort of our crews to educate themselves and keep themselves safe. I want to point out that there was a command team in place that did daily research into COVID and what today's recommendations are, working directly with HR and risk to make sure that we were doing the right measures to keep our people safe. True heroes worked for this fire department in relation to our COVID response for the last year. We got very aggressive with our supply chain. That was hard to do. Everybody in the world, let me say that again, every agency in the world was trying to buy the same things that we were trying to buy. There was no mutual aid. There was no buddy deals. There was no department that had excess. We had to get very creative. At one point, we had bought raincoats as protective equipment for our gear, for our crews. That was third stage, like what-if trials. We eventually bought hazmat suits, Level B hazmat suits to equip our people in. We never got to that because the city was very aggressive and put their money where their mouth is to keep the employees safe, and we were able to secure... COVID came at us very fast and the information was changing daily. I really, I really want to recognize the effort of our crews to educate themselves and keep themselves safe. I want to point out that there was a command team in place that did daily research into COVID and what today's recommendations are, working directly with HR and risk to make sure that we were doing the right measures to keep our people safe. True heroes worked for this fire department in relation to our COVID response for the last year. We got very aggressive with our supply chain. That was, it was hard to do. Everybody in the world. Let me say that again. Every agency in the world was trying to buy the same things that we were trying to buy. There was no mutual aid. There was no buddy deals. There was no department that had excess. We had to get very creative. At one point, we had bought raincoats as protective equipment for our gear, for our crews. That was third stage, like what-if trials. We eventually bought hazmat suits, Level B hazmat suits to equip our people in. We never got to that because the city was very aggressive and put their money where their mouth is to keep the employees safe. And we were able to secure the PPE required to respond to the calls. And right now, we have on hand ample supplies for continued COVID battle. We looked at different airway mechanisms. The smart one early on was that the aerosolization process that we do, whether we're innovating or we're doing a BiPAP or some sort of aerosol oxygen delivery device to a patient, that aerosolizes their out air, their exhalation. And so we tried different things like acrylic boxes that we built in conjunction with a local manufacturer that enabled our people to have a negative atmosphere over that patient that exhausted through an exhaust fan. And they would have their hands in an acrylic box to perform innovations. We changed protocols. We did a knock-and-back-up protocol where we would knock and have the patient come to us instead of us sending many resources into a facility or a home. We would try and get the patient to come to us so we can secure the scene and the safety for our responders. And also, many people didn't want to go to the hospital. So broadening our ability to give them some access to medical care and then have them stay home. We partnered early with our nursing homes. We recognized that nursing home residents were the most vulnerable in our population. And so we, early on, partnered, we hosted weekly conference calls and sent information to nursing homes and assisted living facilities to connect them with available resources and give them the best current-day advice. That worked out really well for us. You might recall that the Texas governor, he employed the Texas Fire Service to go and test every resident of a nursing home, a licensed nursing home in Texas. And this department met that challenge. We were part of a countywide task force, helped arrange that, put the task force together, trained our personnel on it, and participated in the testing of every nursing home in Fort Bend County. We eliminated the exposures to fire stations, put protocols in place to keep our responders isolated, closed our fire stations to the public, engaged deep cleaning protocols on both the fire stations and the response apparatus. And then we started using Zoom, just like the PD video talked about. Who didn't know what Zoom was a year ago? How many times a day are we on it now? So we've done MIAC, Sugar Land 101, CFA, council meetings, staff meetings, everything on Zoom. We meet with our, and actually, it's increased our communication at the station level, the use of virtual services. So some of it will stay. Next slide, please. As we look in what we're doing here for FY21, we're focusing on EMS. It's 63% of what we do this year. We continue to work on our improvement in those areas. We're going to reallocate some of our current FTEs into shift supervision. It's a notable absence in our staffing plan right now, and it's going to assist us in our improvement plan. We're going to look at our medical direction reach back and our quality assurance and quality improvement plans and programs. We're developing an officer development program called Leadership Courage. I'm inspired by the work that's going on in that. But this will prepare everyone from a new hire to a newly promoted battalion chief to be functional at their job before we need them functional. We've gone through a comprehensive policy update. We're almost done with that, as a matter of fact. We're shifting away from policies. We employ some of the best responders in the industry, and we're trying to write a policy book, more like procedures and guidelines, so that they can use their judgment that best serves the public. We have really bright people riding our truck, and we're trying to give them the authority where the information is so they can act to best serve the public. We have an aggressive asset management plan underway right now. This is an expensive business to be in, and some of it's very predictable, how long some of our capital assets last. And we want to be able to forecast that a number of years out. We continue to work aggressively on a fire training facility. We can't tell you how appreciative we are for the work that council did to make that happen, for the work Mr. Bogart did prior to his leaving. We're not resting and just riding the improvements the city has provided us. We continue to invest at the crew levels. We have trucks out there every week doing training. We have crews out there every month, probably doing some sort of improvement. And it really increases the ownership of the facility. And finally, we're working on our staffing factor. And we don't have hard and fast numbers, but what I know is that what we're doing isn't working for the fire department. We have a staffing factor that was adopted in the 80s. And there's been a number of federal and state law changes that affect long-term leave, like FMLA or military leave. And it's negatively affecting our ability to staff our trucks. We're also looking at a changed model when we shifted into EMS, that the supervision levels on the EMS side are a bit heavier than the supervision requirements on the fireside. And so we're looking at what that staffing factor might be so that we continue that high level of customer service to our citizens. Next slide, please. All of this is only possible because we employ the best people in the industry. And my slide, my video, we always have a video. And hats off to Eric on our Chief Robbins on the video they put together. He's got great people working for him. We have fantastic people working for the fire department. And so with that, I want to highlight just a few of them. Next slide, please.
Sugar Land Fire Department. We're part of the community, and the community is part of us. Our department enjoys a good standard of coverage, excellent equipment, a visionary council, and a supportive community. But what truly makes us great is the quality of our people. The dedication is evident from the moment the community walks into the fire department. Being the face of the department, Isabel Hernandez takes great pride in providing excellent customer service while also being responsible for processing thousands of documents related to the Fire Marshal's Office and code compliance.
Hi, my name is Isabel Hernandez. I am an administrative assistant with the Sugar Land Fire Department. I have been with the city for seven years. I enjoy working for the Fire Department Prevention Division because I understand the importance of fire codes and how they help keep our community safe. The Sugar Land Fire Department provides outstanding service with remarkable compassion, integrity, and trust. And that is why I enjoy working for the Sugar Land community.
Our 911 calls are met with a skilled roster of responders. One such responder, Cody Goodman, worked tirelessly to improve our service and provide top-notch lifesaving care to our citizens. From advanced cardiac care to knee-deep compressors, Cody exemplifies the best in our paramedics.
My name is Cody Goodman. I'm a firefighter paramedic with the city of Sugar Land. I love working for the fire department for the strong sense of brotherhood it brings to myself and the strong dedication we have to our community. This is a fast recovery study, and with that, we're a rapidly developing fire department. We're a young EMS service, but we've made great strides in the last few years. And I can't wait to see what we're going to do in the future to improve the fire department and EMS service for the citizens of Sugar Land.
And it's not just the fire department that benefits from the dedication of our employees. Michael Dimitri hit the ground running in the first year with us, taking on the role of Tactical Emergency Casualty Care Coordinator. And he now regularly instructs within the fire, police, and dispatch departments.
My name is Michael Dimitri, and I've been with this organization for about a year. I love being a firefighter paramedic. I love being a firefighter paramedic because it allows me to provide the type of services unlike any other. When people call 911, it's to the darkest days that they're doing. I enjoy working for the Sugar Land Fire Department. They have allowed me to bring my previous training and experience to be able to train my colleagues. They have brought my passions into a reality. We create different training seminars and groups such as dating control. So if the city were to experience an unforeseen event in the future, we'll be ready, we'll be proficient in our care. We provide the best care possible for the citizens of Sugar Land.
Our skillful workforce takes care of its own as well. Maurice Williams has been busy this year creating a health and wellness program that will benefit the entire department. One aspect of the program is an enhanced physical performance test and related training to keep our responders in top-notch shape.
Hi, my name is Maurice Williams. I have been working for the city of Sugar Land for approximately 10 years. I'm currently working on the Health and Wellness Project, which includes focusing on firefighter fitness, mental health, and nutrition. I've also been working on our firefighter PPT, which is an annual test we conduct in order to make sure our firefighters are fit to serve the citizens of the city of Sugar Land.
Fire responses are met with an equally well-trained workforce, proficient in latest strategy and tactics. Jean Delasentos self-initiated a program to teach our workforce about enhanced flow path patterns. This training helps our responders use the building layout and components to our advantage during firefighting operations.
Hello, my name is Jean Delasentos with the Sugar Land Fire Department. I currently have seven years in. I hold the rank of firefighter paramedic. I absolutely love being a firefighter. I try to treat every year as it's Ricky year. Currently, we're working on fire behavior training. It's certainly vital for us to know where the fire is, where it's heading, and how we can affect it. Implementing this training helps us better serve the community.
Sugar Land is well-served by their professional responders. Their dedication shows every day in the work this department performs. The Sugar Land Fire Department is part of the community, and the community is part of us.
Next slide, please. With that, I want to take a moment to recognize Scott Baierman. He's one of our firefighter paramedics. He has a unique skill set. He does video production on the side. As a lot of firefighters have part-time jobs, we capitalize on every bit of our employees that we can. And so I want to thank him for doing the, working on those videos, continuously building videos for this fire department. With that, I answer any questions council might have.
Doug, I want to commend you and your team. I mean, I know during this Arctic blast, you had several fires, one that involved loss of life. And I know, because I talked to Doug, and he kind of told me what your firefighters experienced, no one should ever have to go through that. And those are extraordinary circumstances. You know, sometimes, you know, those of us that aren't involved in the day-to-day care that you all are involved in, you know, don't quite understand how that affects you. It's not physical, it's mentally. And we appreciate, we appreciate the sacrifice, the men and women, you know, in your team that they go through, they go through daily, not only with COVID, but also with extraordinary circumstances like that Arctic blast that came through. So I want to thank you on behalf of, you know, of the public, on behalf of the citizens of Sugar Land. Thank you and the men and women that are in the fire department. Thank them for their service. Thank them for their commitment. And I'll open it up for other council members. Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, this is really a great report. And I think a 5 minute and 55 second average arrival time for the 28 structure fires is very commendable. And I want to thank you and the Fire EMS Department for all you do to keep our city safe. And I'd like to thank, again, all of our first responders for your service and for your sacrifice for our city.
On the shot.
Doug and Jeff, thank you, and thank you to your teams. Very, really nice report, as always. The one thing that kind of stuck out to me is staffing for you. And you know the city council always will support you. If you need headcounts in your department, please bring them forward because if you need them, we'll support you.
Chief, I am a little partial because I'm still a police officer. So go easy on me here. I do want to say thank you. You guys are amazing. I have never heard a single complaint about the fire department or EMS. And I'm telling you, I hear some complaints from time to time, never about firing it. You guys are the absolute best, we know it. Now, regarding the video, again, I may be a little partial. I think the lighting was off a little on the fire video compared to the police video.
I'm not, we're leaving with that, Doug. We're going to move on. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your and your team. Item number six, City Council, City Manager Report. 6A, City Council Member Reports. Carol, let's start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I met with Representative J.C. Jutan to discuss the impact of runner storm Yuri and to express my concerns about our power grid in Texas. And I gave a pretty comprehensive list of concerns and also was involved in some community events Saturday and Sunday. But I'll let Councilmember Kramali cover those.
Councilmember Kramali.
I guess I was nominated. Mayor, I know earlier you had mentioned you had thanked the community coming out during this COVID, I mean, during this cold blast that we had. But not in our city, but Riverpoint Church was opened as a warming shelter. And I know a lot of our residents attend Riverpoint Church, work there, volunteer there. And I went and delivered some blankets to them one evening. And what a beautiful facility, obviously, that they have. And they opened their doors. They had about 60 people that utilized it throughout the county. And I just want to thank everyone from Riverpoint Church for opening their door and making that a warming shelter. Since Carol told me to, we attended on Saturday a water giveaway at the Smiley Chumonan Center. Councilmember William Ferguson was also there for a little bit. And, you know, they always do a great job. And I think there was about eight pallets of water that was given out over a two-hour period. And then the final one is, I had a bunch of business owners that came to me and said, hey, we want to do a food giveaway. I contacted our good friend Chris at The Skeeters. He volunteered to allow his parking lot to be used, worked with the city to get all the approvals, worked with our police department. Thank you there, Chief, for working with us. But 2,000 meals were distributed this past Sunday with eight pallets of water, 10,000 PPE. The distribution started at 2:00 PM, and we had people lining up at 12:15 PM. They beat the volunteers there, which just shows that there's a need in our community. People came from all over the Houston, greater Houston area, and it just warmed our heart. And I want to thank all the volunteers and all the business owners that participated in that. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Along with you and Councilmembers Lane and Kramali, we attended the Fort Bend Mayor and Council meeting in Simonton. And I also had a very, very informative and interesting lunch with a very community-minded constituent, which I found very, very instructive. So that was my week. Thank you.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes, Mayor. We've all had a lot of work to do, and it's been a pleasure working with all of our council members in our community. I had a little unique opportunity on Saturday. I had a New York media crew come into town, and they wanted to hear how in the world we pull off so much for our community. And so all I really did was watch them go to the places and to the homeowners and to the businesses in our greater area. And I cannot wait till that 30-minute documentary comes out because it is a highlight of our area, and I cannot wait till you guys get to see that one day.
Thank you, Doug. Councilmember Porter.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just report that we have an upcoming meeting with some residents from Alcarne Lakes, continuing to talk with them about their concerns. Other than that, thank you.
Jennifer.
Well, mine's already been covered, just a comment that's on my heart and just watching the presentations of the police and fire. I know they encounter a lot of things that could be dangerous to bring home to their families and to let them know that that's on my heart, that's on our hearts, and that we're always here to support them and the staff.
Most of us have already been covered. I'll testify before the State Urban Affairs Committee tomorrow on COVID-19 on how Sugar Land kind of weathered the storm, so to speak. So that's at 10:30. Item number 6B, City Manager Report. Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Parks Department is having an open-air chess tournament on the Plaza on March 13th. The reservations close March 4th. There are out-of-state people coming in to compete. So we need to get our Sugar Land people to come. We don't need to be beat by...
Ferguson, look, Councilmember Ferguson's already thrown out the challenge.
Well, I...
The challenge is out. He's ready to compete against anybody in chess.
No offense to Councilman Ferguson. We're going to need some other chess players.
Some real chess players?
I think Councilman Ferguson and I would be a good duel at chess, but not against anybody but ourselves. So we need some Sugar Land people. We've got a good number of signups, but we don't need to lose this somebody.
Reach into the high school. We've got some of the high school kids can probably win some of those.
We don't need no non-Texans winning this thing. Second thing, you know, we talked about the storm, the winter storm, last time. And so we've focused a lot of our efforts now on implementing... we've focused a lot of our efforts now on employees serving employees, which is something that I'm really, really proud of. But over this last weekend, we had employees volunteering throughout to help their other employees. We had attorneys that don't weigh 100 pounds, soft and wet, hauling carpet to the front of houses. We had crime analysts bagging up insulation. We had so many different employees, and so they're doing this on their own time to help their fellow employees, and it's definitely inspiring, and we work with a special group. The last is, one of my favorite meetings each year is the police and fire annual reports because, I mean, we've got a special thing here. Our police and fire are exceptional, and they're exceptional at all levels. And that's, you know, the chiefs are, I think, the best chiefs in the country, and they'll tell you that their job is much easier because they have the best employees in the country. The other unique thing that we're spoiled by here is how they work together and how they respect each other, because that is not the case a lot of places. And so I just want to, you know, give a shout out to both of those departments, and what a year. I mean, the pivots that they've needed to take and the sacrifices all of them have made. So very proud to work alongside those men and women. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Any other business? Merchant New Journ.
Summate.
And a Merchant New Journ 723. Thank you, Carol.